October 7th, will the clerk call the roll, please?
Dr. Collins?
Here.
Dr. Jacobowitz?
Here.
Ms. Jordan?
Here.
Mr. Lamb?
Here.
Ms. Lau?
Here.
Mr. Michael? Mr. Chauncey?
Here.
Ms. Shear?
Here.
Ms. Spicer?
Here.
Okay, so we have eight members here. Mr. Michael will join us later soon, I'm sure. Rise for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, thank you. We have held our executive session. There's one resolution coming out of executive session, B O E 27. Be resolved in consideration of the settlement of differences with First Student, Inc., for the period from March 16th, 2020, through September 30th, 2020, and assurance that students will have transportation as needed during the 2020-2021 school year. The Board of Education hereby authorizes the Board President to execute an agreement on behalf of the school district with First Student, Inc., for payment of a percentage of operating expenses as presented to the Board at this meeting. I'd like to move that, and I'll ask for a second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any, is there any discussion? So if I, do you, could you give the public a little background on this, Dr. Catalino?
Sure. This is, this is an agreement with our bus company, with our, one of our larger bus companies, and we would hope to have agreements with our other bus companies moving forward around payment for the end of the school year last year when we were, the state of emergency forced us to close from March 16th until June 30th. Again, so we were using the transportation, but we did have transportation contracts with them running through June 30th, so this was a settlement so we can, you know, keep them moving and keep them transporting our students, as well as being fair and equitable to all, to all of our contractors.
Uh, and the money involved is, uh, for the period before July 1st was encumbered. It was last year's funds, and the money for this year is in the budget. So... There's no other discussion? I'll call the question. All in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Any abstentions? Uh, okay, so, uh, I don't know if it's eight to zero or nine to zero. Mr. Michael's not logged on yet?
Yeah, he is.
Oh, he is?
He's jammed.
Oh, okay, so that is adopted. The next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. We have two, two, um, minutes for two meetings to consider. Minutes of September 16th, 2020, we have a motion.
So...
And a second?
Second.
Are there any corrections or comments on the minutes of September 16th, 2020? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Abstentions? Okay, unanimously approved. We have a motion to accept the minutes of the September 30th, 2020 meeting. Motion? Someone moved. It's been moved and seconded. Are there any corrections or changes or questions?
I'm sorry, who seconded that?
I think it was, uh, Dr. Jacobowitz that seconded. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so all in favor of adopting the, accepting the September 30th, 2020, uh, minutes, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Any abstentions? Unanimously adopted. We'll now go on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Catalino?
Thank you, Mr. Chauncey. Tonight for my superintendent's report, I only have one topic, and it is our school reopening. Just to recap, as you all know, the Board had approved us to extend our remote learning period while we make adjustments to our reopening plan. So we did, we did pivot, and we are, tonight I'm going to present again not every detail of the reopening plan, but I think some of the major points, especially the things that most of our parents and students want to know, really about the, the what and when type of things. So I'm going to start with our first slide, just to talk about what to expect in the return to school, as we talked about before. We can expect all students, grades K through 12, will attend school in person, two days per week. Students will be placed into two groups, maroon and gold. Maroon students would be in person on Monday and Tuesday. Gold students will be in person Wednesday and Thursday. Mahar pre-K students will attend school daily. And all students, except Mahar pre-K students, will have remote learn days on Fridays. Students will wear masks throughout the day, except for meals and mask breaks. School buildings will be cleaned and sanitized every evening. Our social and emotional support will continue to be provided. Our RTI, AIS, and ENL service will be scheduled on an individual basis to meet students' specific needs. Technical support for our families will continue. It will be provided by our IT department, and I've included the phone number there. Instructions will be both synchronous and asynchronous, but there will be live contact with teachers daily. Students and teachers will continue daily engagement and feedback, whether in school or at home. One of the big things that people are asking is what's the date? Our elementary students, that's grades pre-K through six, will return to school on Monday, October 26th. And our grades seven through 12 will return to school on Monday, November 9th. Just to give a snapshot of a elementary school schedule, not really snapshot, just kind of the format of the elementary school schedule. This is the elementary and our Mahar pre-K. All students will be in person daily. Grades K through four and, and the GW pre-K will be maroon Mondays and Tuesdays in person, gold Wednesdays and Thursdays in person. Self-contained students will attend in person Monday through Thursday, and Fridays for students will be all remote again, except for our Mahar pre-K. Building, so who's going when and who's in maroon and gold? Our building principals are working on their class loads, and our transportation department's working on their bus loads, so we will, our principals will inform parents which group their students are in maroon or gold by Monday, October 19th. Our middle school schedule, maroon again is Monday through Tuesdays, and those are in-person days for our students with last names A through L. And our gold, which is our last names M through Z, are Wednesdays and Thursdays for their in-person days. I do want to make sure that I, that I state this. There is still work going on the, on the alphabet, as far as the splits are concerned. We're really looking deeply into, you know, our student records to make sure, sometimes we have students with this, different last names who live in the same household, and those kinds of things, to make sure we can adjust, to make sure that we can be convenient for parents, so you don't have two students in the same household going on two separate days. So that could, this could be adjusted a little bit over the next few days, but, but in general, an A through L and an M through Z split is what we see happening. Our self-contained students will attend in person Monday through Thursday, so every day, except for the Friday, all students will be on remote. Students will follow their A through F day schedule, and that will just continue right through our remote, so just as they've been doing through the remote learning, they will be doing that in their, when they come to school. I also, I don't think I mentioned, for the elementary, it was on the slide, but I don't think I mentioned, elementary also, our self-contained students will attend in person Monday through Thursday. High school schedule, same, maroon and gold. A through K will be our maroon Mondays and Tuesdays, and the L through Z will be our gold Wednesdays and Thursdays in person. Self-contained students, again, will attend in person Monday through Thursday, and Friday all students will be remote. Bosie CTE students will attend their Bosie CTE programs on those, on those Fridays. Students, again, as with the middle school, will follow their A through F day schedule. Another important piece that I know parents would like to know, not only the, when is my student going and what days, but also what time is our bus coming, when are our arrivals, when are our school days starting? And we had to make some, we did have to make some adjustments with this because of transportation and the change in how many students we can put in, into a bus, creating more bus runs for our drivers and our bus companies, so there is some change to the arrival and dismissal times. Our elementary, on 10:26, the hybrid will begin, and the pre-K through four, their arrival to school will be at 9:30 a.m., and their dis, and instruction will start at 9:55. Their dismissal will be at 3 p.m. Grades five and six, their arrival will be at 7:40 a.m., and the dismissal will be at 2:20 p.m. Our secondary students' arrival will also be, again, seven four, oh, sorry, our seven through eight students, 7:40 a.m. will be the arrival, and their dismissal will be at 2:20 p.m. And grades nine through 12 will arrive at school at 7:20, and dismissal will be at 2 p.m. You'll notice I put in this slide, the instructional begins, we've built in time for buses to drop off for our safety, our safety checks, and our temperature checks as students come into the buildings. So the arrival time and the actual instruction time, there's, there is some gap in between there. Just lastly, so we, people know, we're still working on several things. There's some things that are still going to evolve over the next week or so as we get ready to reopen. I know, just wanted to push this out because people were asking me these questions over the last couple of weeks. When will athletics begin? We are estimating to try to start our, our preseason workouts for athletics on October 26th. Those are small group workouts, not large-scale practices or with any individual team. Those will be organized by our athletic department and overseen by our athletic department, so those will be small workouts starting on October 26th. As you all know, Section 9 has decided to open sports on November 30th, so if everything goes smoothly and we can start on, on November 30th, our, our student athletes will have been, you know, strength and conditioning training from 26th to November 30th and ready to begin tryouts, and then begin the season in December. Extracurriculars, our estimated start date for that, for our extracurriculars throughout the rest of the district would be January 4th, and we're working out the logistics on that. As I said, we want our students to be able to be involved in as many activities as we can safely, so we're, we're spending time working on that. And lastly, transportation and pickup-dropoff routing, as far as where's my bus stop, what bus will my student be on? Those details will be out the week before we begin school, as they usually are in August, when we have a regular school day, and we'll post those so parents know exactly where their bus stop is and what bus they are taking to school. So just in closing, I guess, you know, this is, I want to thank everyone who's, over the last week, really buckled down to create a plan. While I gave you various, some, really the overview of the plan, there are a million details that had to go into this to make these things happen. There's a million more details that we're working out. The reason for the, for the ask to move to remote for a longer period of time is, we had to undo everything that we did for our last plan, so that is not something, you know, we don't turn on a dime like that, especially when we look at schedules and buses and those kinds of things. So I thank the teaching and learning team and everyone who's been involved, our building principals and our teachers, you know, hundreds of teachers were involved in this conversation. I can tell you, just off the top of my head, I know there were about 300 elementary teachers and, you know, that were involved in conversations, and also, again, dozens and dozens of secondary teachers. So we're, we're, while this is an ideal, obviously, I mean, no one thinks this is an ideal school year, this is a plan moving forward, and we're going to continue to look to improve it, look to make it as close to perfect as we can, which in this situation isn't really that possible, but we are going to make the best of what we have and make sure our students get what they need. So I will take questions from the Board at this time, if there are any.
Any questions? Dr. Jacobowitz?
Thank you for fleshing this out and putting some detail in. That's appreciated, and um, from 9:45 to 7:20, I think we're going to have to start working on that, like, right now. Can you talk a little bit about the schedule during the day? They've been on a two-hour delay schedule, and this schedule that you've put in front of us looks much more like the normal schedule, so are we going back to the normal class times that we would have in a regular school year?
Yes, that, that is basically what we're doing, is going back to, the elementary is, is a little different, and, and that is really about making sure we could build in teacher prep time, so we built it in, in a block at the beginning of the school day, instead of scattered throughout the school day, like it is usually when students are all there in person. But at the high school level, we, high school and middle school level, we really are going back to basically the, the same schedule the students would have if they were all in person. You know, again, a lot of that is organizing things around transportation, making sure we can get the 6,500 students that we have, in this case, 3,200 students, 3,200, 500, 3,000 to 500 students to school, and the buses, and, and, you know, we still do have, you know, we have the same number of buses, but we only have a third, a third of the students on there. So we're sending half the students, but we can only, we can only, you know, facilitate a third of the buses, of students on the bus. So it takes more runs, it takes more time, and we had to make some adjustments to schedules, but that was a long answer to your question. The question and answer was, yes, at the middle and high schools, we're basically going back to where we were.
But at the elementary school, there'll be a block in the beginning of the day, you said, that will be dedicated to teacher planning?
Correct.
And so is that why the middle, the elementary schools are starting a little bit later?
Yes.
Okay, and that instructional time, I mean, it's all, is that eating into our instructional hours that we need to provide for the state?
No, that, that does not. With that, it just takes place of the contractually, you know, the contractual 40 minutes or, you know, planning time that the teachers have during the day, which is usually scattered throughout the day. Now it's just held in one place in a block at the beginning of the day. So it doesn't, it doesn't change our instructional time.
Thank you. I see other people.
Okay, Mrs. Shear? Your hand is raised.
Yes. Dr. Carolyn, you already indicated that you would be holding town halls again, because I know, this is great, that it's fleshed out, and I, I know that people will be happy to have all the kids back to school, but, um, town halls, are you still planning on holding them, and when would they start?
Yes, we will have a town hall next week. I haven't, we haven't solidified a date yet, but we will have a town hall in the first part of next week.
I think Captain Collins is in there.
Yes.
Yeah, Dr. Collins.
Do you have another ques, do you have any other question, Mrs. Shear?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay.
Your hand is up.
And Dr. Collins has her, had her hand up?
Thank you. Yeah, following up quickly on Ms. Shear's question, is it possible to provide a date for, for community for some Spanish-speaking and special needs town halls, along with other more traditional town halls that we've been offering?
Yes, absolutely. I mean, we have a couple of weeks till we start, so I think we're going to, we're going to have to really spend a lot of time communicating with our, with the community as a whole, so we can, yes, we can do that.
Great, that would be appreciated. The, the other, the other question I had was, could you talk a little bit more about what's happening on the asynchronous days? I think, I, I think if I understood you correctly, that a teacher would be, you said in, there'd be live contact with the teacher daily, but the kids are at home for two of those days. Can you just tell us what that looks like at both, at all three levels, actually, the elementary, the middle, and the high?
Yeah, at the ele, at the elementary level, we're still, you know, kind of working out exactly what the, what the instructional model would look like, but at the secondary level, it will, we're working together right now with our, with our teachers to establish a way to livestream every class, so all students will be in attendance at a class, all at the same time, some online and some sitting at their desks in the classroom.
Can I follow up and just learn a little bit more? So what are the options around for elementary yet? From what I've been hearing from teachers, it sounds like a real challenge to do things at the same time.
At the elementary, we really aren't leaning towards that live streaming at the elementary level. Again, we have our two days of synchronous, our two days of asynchronous, and, you know, using small groups and using some of the services that students need at the elementary level to be live during those, those opposite days is part of our, our plan. But again, I, that's, we've got a couple of different things going, but that's kind of the gist of it.
Mrs. Lau?
Muted.
You're muted, Mrs. Lau?
I was wondering about the lunch periods and the gym, and have you figured that out for the middle schools and the high schools?
The middle, yeah, yes, we believe we have the lunch periods and the, and gymnasia, and gym PE class figured out. We're still, you know, refining the details on the PE classes and student schedules, and, especially on the remote days, so that's some things, but yes, the, the lunch periods, we are working with our, with our food service people, but we've measured out our, our cafeterias. We've measured out other spaces to move students to. We are going to move away from large tables into smaller tables and/or desks for students, and be socially distanced within there, within those, those spaces. So, you know, we think, we feel pretty confident at the middle and high school that we can deliver lunch safely and have our students, you know, receive their breakfast and lunch pretty much in the, in the cafeteria or in an adjacent area where we can make more space.
Okay, and now with the gym, the students who are supposed to take swimming, will they be doing that or no?
At this point, no.
Okay, we have hands raised by Mrs. Jordan, Mr. Lamb, and Mr. Spicer, your hand was up for a while and now it's down.
Actually, Ms. Lau just asked the question I was going to ask.
Okay, so next in line will be?
Mr. Lamb is next.
Okay, I, okay, I missed him, so it'll be Mr. Lamb and then Mrs. Jordan. Mr. Lamb?
Planning time for elementary is usually related arts time, so what is happening with the related arts classes, like art, music?
Yeah, well, there's multiple things happening with that, so some of them will be live and then some of them will be asynchronous. So that's a, you know, that's part of that, when you didn't have enough to fill in those spots, we wanted to make sure we, we had that time for teachers at the beginning of the day.
So that'll all happen at the beginning of the day, then?
The, some of it will happen, you know, during the asynchronous days.
Okay, Mrs. Jordan?
I, I really appreciate the, um, heads up for parents as to what you're thinking, and I can appreciate why you needed the extra time to fill in these details, but I think also, parents and families will need to know as soon as possible what, not only the transportation pickup is, but a lot of people will be delivering their children to school and picking them up from school, and so I wondered if that would probably come from every building principal to notify parents when to start arriving and what that procedure will be?
Yes, each buil, yeah, absolutely, and, and each building is different, as you all know, so each building principal is in charge of creating their, you know, arrival procedures and their, and for parents and for walkers, for drop-offs and for walkers, as they do during the regular school year. So, you know, each principal will communicate with their, with their families to make sure that they have an orderly drop-off and pickup and, you know, system for their walkers.
Okay, Mrs. Lau? And then Dr. Jacobowitz just raised her hand, so she'll be second.
Okay, so when the teachers are, you said this for the elementary, the teachers are going to be teaching and doing remote? So who, what, who's going to be taking, and that, that seems a little difficult.
No, the, the elementary teachers won't be teaching and doing, they'll be, yes, they'll be teaching and doing a remote. They'll be teaching the students in front of them, the AB students, and then the, or the maroon students, and then the gold students. Those will be their live days, and then they will have other opportunities to, whether it's asynchronous lessons for their students who are at home during the remote, and some, you know, opportunities for their specials and their push-ins, their reading services, those kind of things during those other days.
Okay.
Okay, Dr. Jacobowitz?
So, my question actually was related to what Mrs. Lau just said, so, I know that these are really difficult and complicated problems, but that concerns me a little bit if you think about having such young kids on asynchronous learning three days a week. So I'm assuming that Friday would be an asynchronous day also, or not?
Friday's an asynchronous day also.
Like what we're doing now?
And I will, I'm going, you know, I'm going to do, I'm going to flip over and let Dr. Felicello kind of fill you in a little, with a little deeper detail than I'm giving you, so I'll let Dr. Felicello speak to that.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you, Dr. Catalino. So I, I met with the teaching and learning team, we've been meeting pretty much nonstop, and after meeting with almost all of the elementary staff in its entirety, one of the, the biggest piece of feedback that I took away is that they really felt they needed time to prepare in the morning. You know, elementary, there is a lot of setup, and they were very concerned about just the physical nature of the room and the location and keeping the students socially distanced. So with that, and with the transportation pieces, you know, that we naturally needed to build some time in because it's going to take a lot longer to get our students into school, it made sense to give the teachers their prep period, the first period in the morning. So they'll come in at their normal contractual time, and again, this hasn't really been shared, but this is the plan, the, the plan that we're proposing. They'll come in at their contractual time from 8:25 to 8:45, they'll have their data meetings with their principals, they'll have normal, all of the normal meetings that they have, from 8:45 to 9:25, they'll have their daily required 40-minute prep period, and then students can begin to enter the building at 9:30, because they're not going to be able to have breakfast in the cafeteria, so they can do a grab-and-go breakfast. That will continue from 9:30 to 9:55. So normally, our students would come in at 8:30, go into breakfast, then they would go to the classrooms at 8:45, and then the school day would begin at 8:55. Now, they're going to go directly to the classrooms at 9:30, they'll have some work, they'll be eating their breakfast, getting ready for the day. At 9:55, our principals will do their morning announcements with the entire learning community. They'll be livestreaming that with both remote learners and our, our in-person learners, and then they can also, we thought, because it is a challenge to, to livestream our teaching, we're looking at the morning meeting is a time where we felt that elementary teachers could potentially stream in, so it would give us that social-emotional, that, that class, that sense of connection for the whole class to come together on a daily basis for, say, a 40-minute block where they're in a morning meeting with maybe a piece of new instruction. Our, then, remote students would go into some asynchronous learning activities that would follow up and continue, while our other students who are in person would then meet with live, they would have live instruction in small group settings. The other thing we're looking at, and this has not been fine-tuned yet, but we're looking at all small group work, since it's very difficult to pull small groups in socially distanced format, small group work will happen on, live on those remote days for those students. And so, let's say I'm a tier-three reading student, I'll meet with my reading provider on my asynchronous remote day. So I will meet with that teacher live. We're looking at potentially making our special areas subjects, and again, this is still very draft form, live for all of our remote students, so that we can really focus on the content and core curriculum with the students who are present. Related service, instrumental music, those are the types of things that we want to happen live on the remote days for the students who are not in person. So I hope that clarifies a little. And Friday, we're looking at the same opening morning meeting, and then asynchronous activities with also reteach, enrichment, touching base, you know, whatever they might need, making those connections with students, and, and having a focus on that social-emotional wellbeing curriculum that we know is needed.
So Friday's, well, okay, thank you, I appreciate that, and I, I really do understand the challenges of a teacher in a room, working with young children, trying to be present for the ones in front of them, but then also the ones at home. I just am concerned about the loss of instruction and instructional time, and it sounds like having some related services or some more intensive focused services on those remote days is a good idea. It sounds like Friday will be a little bit of a makeup day, is that, I mean, with just all asynchronous and, and reteach, and so that concerns me a little.
They'll still have the morning, they'll still have the morning meeting, they'll still have a live morning meeting.
Okay.
With their teachers, and after that, the day will be asynchronous, and as you said, yes, reteach and remediation enrichment activities.
Yeah, it'll be important to see that schedule, I think. I mean, is that, Dr. Padalino, is that the thought for the upper grades also, that Friday will be an asynchronous day or, what does Friday look like, I guess I should ask more?
Very similar to the elementary school, yes, it'd be an asynchronous day, and also what we're working with right now is also possibly an opportunity for some in-person learning for students who have other needs, like our E N L students, to be in, in the building.
Okay. I do appreciate that self-contained will be in four days a week, but I think that's great, okay, thank you all, Paul.
Okay, Mr. Lamb, I believe your hand up was next.
I wanna go back to dropping off, I see that as a nightmare because traffic is gonna back up, and I'm assuming we are not going to let parents leave until we've done a, a check of temperature, because many districts have had issues where students get dropped, they're running a temperature, and parents are gone, and to get someone back, there's a problem, so.
Yeah, I mean, that, that is a potential problem, and we do have our isolation room for students who do not, you know, make it through our protocols, but quite honestly, we don't even have the manpower to do the door and go out to each car, you know, so a student who comes in, gets dropped off by a parent, comes in and, and does not make it through our protocols, will be, you know, our nurses will take them to our isolation room, make the, make the contact they need to make and, and have the student removed, you know, brought home for the day. I know, that's, those are, those are, those logistic issues that are, that we think about all day, every day.
So parents are gonna have a responsibility if they're dropping off their child to make sure their child is going to be, not going to go into an isolated room?
We hope so.
Hope so, okay. Mrs. Lau?
Yeah, I was wondering how will the teaching assistants fit into this plan?
Just that, just as they do during the regular school year.
Okay, with remote, with students on remote and in session, will they all help?
The, our teachers assistants would basically be used as they would during the regular school year, you know, and most of our teaching assistants are assigned to students with I E Ps, they'll be working with their students with, with I E Ps, but the other, our other teachers assistants who are throughout the district will, will function very much like they would if we, everyone was in school.
Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Jordan?
Am I correct in understanding that the, the five through eight middle school students and high school students, if you are marooned and you're in school Monday and Tuesday, on Wednesday and Thursday, will you be watching a livestream of your class?
Correct.
Okay, but for the teachers, I, I just don't know how you interact with the people in front of you and then also with people on the screen, I feel like that is, or is it just gonna be a broadcast and then the days that you're in, the teachers will be interacting with students in front of them? And I would, if I was home, just be watching that? And then, when I'm in school, I'd be interrupting? I, I just think that, I don't know as a teacher, if I could attend to the people in front of me and also on the screen, I, kind of feel like that is really impossible.
We have, we have, again, you know, we're, we're leaning on, you know, our teachers to be creative and do the things that they do, you know, and make their decisions about how they wanna use that time, you know, how they would interact in both phases. We're also looking at, you know, speaking to other districts that are doing this and finding some best practices and wanna, you know, be able to provide professional development and, or just, just support for our teachers who are, you know, engaging in this. But it is, it is, at the secondary level, it has been a pretty common practice throughout the state.
Is there any sort of block scheduling? Would that be helpful or not?
The, the issue with changing the schedule in any way is it would create a whole, the, it would require a complete reschedule, and anyone who's ever done a master schedule at a secondary school, you know, that's something that, that would be, you know, it, it would take us weeks to reschedule every student because of the intricacies of the high school schedule. We had talked about it, we had talked about it in the summer, but it was, it was a mountain we couldn't climb.
Okay, I think it's important that we, we make sure that our teachers have the support that they need to be successful in that kind of setup.
Okay, I have, I put my hand up, and then that, when I'm done, it'll be, Dr. Jakobowitz, your hand is down now? Or is it up?
No, it's up, sorry.
Okay, so you're second after me. I have a couple of questions. So families who have children in multiple grades or at multiple schools, in order that they, all of their children get in the same maroon or gold group, will there be a, and someone brought up the, the different, different names for different last names, will there be a, a phone number that those households, those parents can call to make sure that their children are scheduled on the same day, even if they have one is A and one is Z?
Yeah, we've, we've been working very diligently to make that happen, and I know Dr. Felicello and Ms. Boncel have been working with, looking, you know, at how you coordinate secondary and elementary that way, to make sure that we have, you know, that all of our students who are going on A day are going on, you know, going, who are gold, are gold and who are maroon are maroon, so to, to facilitate that for families. So I think, we, we feel pretty good about where we are right now with that, but we're gonna, and if for some reason that doesn't, it doesn't happen, and, and you know what, it's, it's gonna, some, but something is gonna come up that we're gonna have to make an adjustment. The, the work is through the, you know, the communication should be through the building principal.
Okay. Another question, the busing for pre-K, will that be as it was done last year?
Busing and pre-K for Mohar, we will not have busing at pre-K Mohar this year.
Okay, so no busing for, at Mohar, for, for those pre-K students. The first week that the secondary classes are in, are going to be in person, November ninth, November eleventh will be a holiday, so that'll be that Wednesday, so what happens when there's a holiday in the, during the week?
Just as, just as it would at any other time during the school year. That day, the next day becomes the next letter day and we move on.
Okay, so those, would those students still have, let's say, the gold that were scheduled for Wednesdays, would they be Thursday and Friday then?
That's a good question. I think that's something we need to look at in the calendar as to how we would adjust for a day during the, you know, holiday during the week. So I think that, that's some, that's a good question, I have to, I have to revisit that.
Okay. And, and just so I'm clear, I don't have any kids, so I don't, but, the synchronous, the secondary students, they'll be, they'll be starting in the morning at eight fif, at seven fifty or something like that. Will the, will the remote students, they will be participating, streaming or, on that, so they'll follow the same time schedules as if they were in school that particular day?
Correct.
And I know Mrs. Jordan asked about, well, how will a teacher interact with remote students? I mean, if those remote students were asynchronous, they wouldn't be interacting with the stu, with the teacher anyway, is that correct?
Yes, they would not be, but they will be live students, so they're not asynchronous, they'll be syn, they will be synchronous.
Okay. Okay, Dr. Jakobowitz?
Well, well, actually, Mr. Shaughnessy, to answer, to respond to what you just said, actually, in the current remote context that we have, even though students are remote, teachers, it's, it's more than just a livestream, I mean, the teachers are interacting with the students, so I'm not sure what that will look like when teachers have someone in front of them and people at home, I think that's what Mrs., what Mrs. Jordan was referring to, that that gets complicated. But my question actually is more, is about switching classes, I imagine that grades nine through twelve will switch classes, those kids will move from classroom to classroom?
Yes, those students will move from classroom to classroom, and the principals have created staggered ends of the, you know, passing times during the day so that, so that, while I tell you the, the arrival and dismissal, how classes are held period by period and released, to stagger students through the hallway so they're not, so we don't have, you know, five hundred students in the hallway at the same time, is something that the principals have built into their schedules.
Okay, and then, grades five and six are, and seven are teamed, so will those kids stay in that classroom and the teachers will move between the classes?
As of right now, we have, we do have the students moving at that time.
The students do move, okay. All right, it's, that gets a little bit more complicated at eighth grade at Bailey because those kids are not teamed, so those kids are kind of moving around a lot more than the other students would be. I imagine that that is kind of built into the plan?
That, that is something we are aware of, yes.
So students will have to log off, log on to a team session at the end of class, if they're moving, they'll log off?
Log on to a new team.
And log on to a new team?
Which is what they do now.
Okay.
An activity period, we usually have that period at the end of the day?
We will, we were, we are eating into that time with class time and staggered passing times, so those days, those periods at the end of the day will not be held this, during this time.
So if a student needs extra help, I mean, that was a great period for students who needed extra help, so where, where can they find that now?
Yeah, we, I think that's part of that asynchronous Friday as well, to find opportunities for office hours for teachers, for students who need extra help.
Okay, so teachers will be available on those days for extra help?
Yeah, and, and teachers do have time at the end of the day also, that's built into the schedule, so.
Okay, and then I have one question that's related to sports, actually, can you review for everybody what, when you say sports begins on ten twenty-six, so that's, those are preseason workouts, that's fall sports?
So here's, let me, let me be sure that I said it correctly, I mean, we are, we are projecting, estimating that we will come back with sports on ten twenty-six, and those would be preseason workouts, and my understanding, it can be any athletes, anyone, any athlete can come for preseason workouts, it doesn't matter what season they are, whether it's spring, you know, fall, winter or spring, in this situation, winter, fall, spring. Again, I think we would prioritize the students who are coming into their, their new, the other season upcoming in November thirtieth, which will be our winter season.
Okay.
But they would be, you know, again, small group workouts, that's, no contact, you know, not using equipment or anything, just, you know, conditioning, stretching, those kind of things.
Right, so that's, so for example, the basketball team might say, we will have some preseason conditioning and workouts beginning on twenty-sixth?
The basketball team won't say, but it will be, it will be held, you know, the athletic department will coordinate that, so it wouldn't be your basketball coach doing that, it would probably be our trainer who would work with small groups of students and schedule them throughout the week and probably, you know, maybe, obviously, probably by sport, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lamb, I believe your hand is up next.
I wanna go back to Mrs. Jakobowitz's, high school and middle school moving classes. When students leave a classroom, that classroom, in the three minutes or whatever that we pass, it fills with other students, so how are we taking care of cleaning or doing the sanitizing that we need to do in those rooms before we get new students in it?
Yeah, well, we, we have the, you know, the, the cleaning supplies to clean between classes, but, and one, and one side of it, and the other side of it is, you know, we, in the morning, we test, you know, in the morning, every student does their, is gonna do their app, check in, get their temperature taken, and we're admitting them into the building. So at, at that point, those students, we are admitting them into the building, so we're making the assumption that they are not in a situation that they are spreading any, you know, spreading, you know, or creating infection, but we, we've ordered P P E for desks to be wiped down in between classes and those kind of things, so we're still working on exactly how we'll get that stuff done, but we're, we're prepared to do it as far as materials and supply.
Okay, Mrs. Lau's next, Dr. Jakobowitz, you have your hand back up again? Okay, thank you. Mrs. Lau? You're mute, Mrs. Lau, you're mute.
Mr. Lamb answered, or asked the same question I was wondering about. Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Collins?
Thank you, yeah, I had a question around the childcare and the Y academies that have been happening within the schools, are those still, I assume they can't happen now that schools will have students in them, do, do our community partners have places to go or?
We're, we're, we're working with them right now to, to figure out what we can do, but no, they won't be able to continue to be in the school buildings once, once we have full school.
Okay, I don't see any other hands up at the moment, so I can assume that this, the superintendent's report on school reopening is finished?
I, I just have a comment.
Mrs. Lau?
Yes, I have a comment. I know last week we got a lot of flack about the announcing of, of the schools being delayed, and it seems like the public feels it's our fault or that we're the final say on this, and really, we didn't have any say until the last minute, so if you have a committee, Dr. Padalino, who, you don't have a board member on the committee?
I did, we didn't have a committee on this, this is the administration's responsibility to create a plan and present it to the board, if the board wants to reject the plan, you are the, you know, you have the right to do so, but the administration, working with our king, with the teachers, has created this plan.
Okay, 'cause the public thinks that it's us?
Well, the public thinks that it's me as well, and it's not, it's the virus, it's the budget, it's the transportation, it's a thousand logistics that go into trying to create a plan to have a school year that isn't really a school year and to bring students into a building where we have restrictions, where we usually have two thousand students in high school, where we're only allowed to put in less than a thousand, where we're supposed to serve food to students who sit at tables at five hundred students per lunch period, but now we have socially distanced them, you know, we, we are working within rules, parameters and guidelines that are, that are very difficult to create something that is, you know, even, even a shadow of what we would do during the regular school year.
Thank you.
I'd also like to point out that there are districts, school districts across the state, you know, ignore the rest of the country for a moment, but that have reopened, have plans, have reopened and are shutting down. New York City has nine zip codes in Queens, I think, that are closing down again after being open for a few days. I heard Albany, Schenectady, it's, it's a crazy time and people are, it's unfortunate, but there's little that, I mean, certainly, there's little that the board can do about that, and, and the administration has to react to the circumstances that they find on the ground every day, and it's not a, it's not a, it's not a normal time, unfortunately.
Mr. Shaughnessy, I did have one more comment, and that was something that we had talked about last week, that I just wanted to make sure to remind people that if they want, if parents want to keep their children home and keep the learning remote, they have that option, correct?
That is correct, and there is, there is a form that is on the website right now for, for parents that they can fill out. We're also sending it home, you know, with lunches in our, in our lunch distribution, so if their, their, if parents do wanna remain remote during this, during our reopening period, during this, you know, state of emergency, they can just fill out that form and send it in to their, to their building principal. Their building principal will then get it to our registrar, and we will make the arrangements for them, their remote learning from there.
Okay, and there will be an opportunity to reconsider that then, again, in the second semester of thinking after the new year, is that correct?
Yes, well, we will, you know, we will kind of reoffer that as we get into the second semester of the school year, if we're still in this situation, sure.
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Collins, your hand has been up and down. And you're mute.
Sorry about that. I just wanted to also reiterate another point that has been made earlier in previous board meetings and also early this evening, that it'd be really helpful, that this clarity is going to be amazingly helpful for parents to know the dates and the places and the transport. I am worried about the details because of how complicated this, this is going to be or, it's going to seem because it's a new plan, of getting the details out to all portions of our community, and so I know that we've talked about other ways to do that. You just mentioned, actually, that there was some information going out with the meals, and I'm wondering if we can continue to do that with every detail related to this plan, both in English and Spanish, making sure that it's going to, through our community partners, are getting out as soon and as widely as possible?
Yeah, the big picture, the big pictures of, of the plan- Yeah, the big picture, the big pictures of the, of the plan, uh, yes, absolutely. I mean, that, this part of it, and we are, you know, we're going to work with our building principals, because as I said before, you know, each of the buildings is going to have a little different take on every, a lot of different aspects on this. So I, I think when we're looking at the type of things I presented tonight, those are kind of the big picture, district-driven things. And then there's going to be school, you know, individual school-driven things. So we're going to work with our principals to make sure they get their word out to all their students. And again, looking at the number of students we have, who have logged in, you know, and are on teams, I think our, our ability to reach students through, through that, you know, that medium is, is really a good thing to leverage as well. So we'll, we'll be communicating far as, far and wide, and helping our principals communicate with their communities as well.
Okay. Any other questions for reopening? So that ends the superintendent's report. Next, we'll go on to correspondence at Board of Education. And we have three pieces of correspondence to read, and I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Siri.
Okay, our first piece of correspondence is actually from a student. This is from Molly Shambo, who is a fifth grader at Bailey, and she wrote two emails. Her first email was sent on the first day of school, and then she has a follow-up. So, "Dear Dr. Padalino and board members, my name is Molly Shambo, and I'm a fifth grader from Bailey Middle School. In my opinion, the fifth and sixth graders should be assigned to the middle school building if school reopens. Fifth graders need to get to know the middle school. The third and fourth graders can go to the high school building, since they aren't going to be in their regular buildings either way. If school can reopen for all grades, you would only need to move third and fourth grade back to their regular building instead of having to move third, fourth, fifth, and sixth. Thank you, sincerely, Molly Shambo." Last week, she wrote, "Dear Mr. Shaughnessy, I am so happy that the new idea will let me go to Bailey. I can't wait to meet my teachers, they are the best. I'm happy that my sister will get to go to school too. She is a senior, and she loves school. I hope we can go to school on the same days, because she helps me with remote school if I have a problem. My mom has to work at Fosse's during school. She has a very important job. She is a crisis worker. She keeps everyone safe. I will be watching the meeting. Thank you, Molly Shambo."
I'm a sucker for these emails from students.
Our next, our next email is from Clark Richters. Um, and it says, "It's really unfortunate that the Board of Education does not utilize the Local Education Access 20 on Spectrum. Especially in today's environment with the coronavirus, the school board should use any means possible to inform the general public. I would recommend reading the Cable Franchise Agreements, Section 14. Former producer and commissioner, Clark Richters, from Kingston, New York." The next letter we're going to read is from Concerned Kingston. And, um, how many of these did you, did you want me to read at first, or do you want to?
Well, so Concerned Kingston is a new, a recent Facebook group, and they've collected nine hundred and fifty-nine, or nine hundred and fifty-eight, uh, signed petition papers, and a hundred and forty-eight of them have comments written on them.
So I'm going to read their letter that we got from all nine hundred and something, and one, um, extra comment.
Right.
Okay. Um, "We represent Concerned Kingston. I am either a student of Kingston City School District, an employee of Kingston City School District, I have a family member that is a student or employee of KCSD, or I have a KCSD school located in the city or town I live in. An SRO's primary duty, according to the New York State School Board's definition, is to protect the school's environment and to maintain an atmosphere where students, teachers, and staff feel safe. An SRO must be an accredited police officer in good standing, police academy training is minimally six hundred and forty-nine training hours, and then receives additional, additional training from the Criminal Justice Services Youth Service Training Department. This training includes academic organizational structure, counseling, handling special needs students, school violence, gang activity, crisis management, and creating drug-free schools. I support that it is in the best interests of our children, their teachers and staff, and our community for the SROs to continue their important work in our local schools. Safety should never be left up to the staff and teachers of the building. In addition, the, an SRO is a child's first introduction to police officers in many cases, and it is in a positive and safe environment. Please do not take them away from us." And this comment is from Kate Perez. "I have two children ages seven and twelve in the KCSD. The safety of my children should be top priority when they attend school each day. There is no logical explanation as to why this would be, even be up for discussion. As administration and school board representatives, you should protect all students, staff, and families so that they can learn and be part of, and, and in a safe environment. If any of you have children, please consider how you would feel if their safety was taken away. It takes a village to raise children, and SROs are the community helpers that protect our schools. Please also consider the ramifications if something happened in one of our schools that could have been prevented by one of our SROs. I don't think anyone would want that on their conscience. Thank you."
Thank you. So we've gotten lots of correspondence, uh, on both sides of this issue, as well as other issues. So next, next, and, and Mr. Spicer is Chair of the Advisory, Special Advisor, SRO Advisory Committee of the School Board, and we will be announcing, uh, or he will be announcing dates for, for those meetings shortly. Audit and Finance Committee meeting? Audit and Finance Committee is the next item on the agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Shaughnessy. Uh, the Audit and Finance Committee met, uh, last September twenty-second, and we are in receiving of the claims auditorium report and the treasurer's report for the month of August, and which, uh, there are two resolutions for approval tonight. And, uh, may I move those two resolutions together for the board to approve them?
Yes.
Okay, somebody?
Second?
Second.
So this is the treasures and claims auditor reports, and the audit-
August.
Uh, for, for, for August and September, is that correct? Or no, it's not, just August, okay, just August, that's right.
Maybe it's ready.
Okay. Any questions about those two reports? The treasures report and the claims auditor reports? All in favor of accepting them, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay? Any abstentions? Okay, unanimously approved. And your next meeting, Mr. Michael?
I want to add a couple things, Mr. Shaughnessy.
Okay.
Uh, we also have discussion about the internal audit. We agreed to look at, uh, the safety and security operation in the district, and, uh, for internal auditor, we're looking into the operation of the safety and security of the whole district. We also had a sub-discussion about the stadium cuts, which we all know what's going on. And we had a good discussion about the Kestonia project. Uh, as far as the Kestonia, the other thing I have to say tonight is in light of, uh, Austin County executives, Pod Ryan's taking an independent analysis of the cost of the benefit of the Kestonia project. Uh, we should be wanting to take any discussion or any resolution, and you will have further information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Michael. And, uh, we, uh, I just want to note that at Policy Committee, uh, we had discussion, well, I'll, I'll let Mrs. Jordan say that, but the, the discussion about the, um, uh, the, the district-wide safety plan, as it fits in with the, uh, internal audit that's going to be done under the auspices of the Audit and Finance Committee. Mrs. Jordan, Policy Committee report?
Thank you. Um, actually, that, that was one of the things I was going to mention. We, um, met on Friday, October second, at nine thirty, and, as you can see from the file attachments, we had robust discussion, many things. Uh, we did have school safety plans and teens policy eighty-one thirty on our agenda, but decided that we would put that off, because the Audit Committee will be conducted on, um, school and safety plans. And we thought we would put that up until the audit is available. But other than that, we, um, went over student health services, online distance and remote learning, school district records, board member training, homeless. And, um, then there was an intro to sexual harassment, which has been broken apart. It wasn't one, and now we have, uh, a policy in rights for student sexual harassment and a separate policy in rights for employee sexual harassment. So, um, we had a first reading, I guess I got ahead of myself, but we did have a first reading for, uh, student attendance last time. So I would like to move the, um, the motion as written, whereas the Kingston City School District has contracted with NISPAS as consultants to the Board of Education for the review amendment and adoption of its policies manual, and whereas the Subcommittee of the Board, in consultation with NISPAS and legal counsel, have prepared the following policy for amendment and adoption, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education adopt the following amended policy. And we're talking about fifty-one hundred student attendance? For passage tonight?
Okay.
Do you have a second?
Mrs. Shear? Second?
Yes, I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion, uh, from board members? A hearing none, all, uh, all in favor of adopting, uh, the revised policy fifty-one hundred attendance? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Opposed.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed a, um, Dr. Collins, I missed your hand up, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I was a little slow. Can I just ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
Help the, um, well, I just wanted to understand better the place of, um, during remote learning, that will, the availability of technology be considered prior to any CPS sort of referral? And is that, does that belong somewhere in a policy, or is that a regulatory move, or? I don't know. I just, I'd like to put it out there, given that I'm, I'm just, there are, there are still kids who can't get online. And while we need to understand why that is, I also want to make sure there's no punitive action, and, or do we understand why until, um, we have everyone equipped?
Dr. Collins had asked me that question in email, and I suggested that you bring it up, because I think it is a good point.
Okay.
My feeling is that it will probably be in regulations, but I wanted the discussion. I thought, um, maybe, um, Mr. Verge could address that.
Well, I think that I'll, I'll take, just, I'll, I'll take over there, as versus, you know, our practice during this state of emergency is to search and find out who and why people are, students are not in attendance, present, you know, remotely. And before there's any punitive action taken, there wouldn't be, we wouldn't, um, you know, our principals are not calling CPS. And we also, for students who haven't logged on yet, for, for, again, either poor internet service and/or a problem with, with technology. We are, we're drilling down, using the data that we have through our teens', um, our teens' Insights mode, where we can find out exactly every single student in the Kingston City School District who has not logged on yet. And with that, the principals are looking at that, finding out who the students are, working with our social workers and our teachers to reach out and find out why that is. And if it's a technical issue, we're getting out there to try to figure out what we can do to solve it.
Okay. So I, I think we got, I got a little bit out of sequence there. So let me call again, um, all in, the question on the adoption of the policy, of the attendance policy? I, I called for ayes, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
And I didn't get the call for, for opposed, nay? And abstentions? Okay, so that policy is adopted. And back to you, Mrs. Jordan?
Thank you. Dr. Collins, do you feel satisfied that, um, with that response?
Thank you for asking. Yeah, I mean, there was nothing actually in the policy as written that concerned me so much as, except the fact that lack of technology was not in the list of excused absences, or either one of the, that, that would be kind of a place I might imagine injecting it. So, um, I mean, and, and I also understand that during this really difficult time, the district is doing everything they can to support students not to be punitive in cases. I, I just want to make sure that there's somewhere, um, that we've addressed this and at least put it out on the floor of the board, so that we are all on the same page. So, I, I, but I have to say, in terms of the policy is concerned, there's nothing in here that I think I would be opposed to, that relates to that particular.
No, but I think you raised the point, and I think that that might be covered, actually, in our technology, uh, plan. But, um, I think too, that as long as the policy has the parameters, those specifics are usually dealt with in the practice and regulations. So I'm not concerned about it, but I just want to make sure you're not.
Yeah, thank you.
Going back to what we reviewed, we do have first readings of new and amended policies available for you. They're all listed here, five four two oh, student health services, eight one three one, pandemic planning, who would ever believe we would have that? Eight six three five, intermission and data privacy, security breach and notification, four seven six five, online distance and remote learning, eleven twenty, school district records, and fifty one fifty one, education of homeless or temporarily housed children and youth. So I would ask that you take some time to please read those over. We have looked at them in, from many different perspectives in our meetings, and hope that, um, there's clarity within. So that will be what we'll be looking at. Next time, I do want to thank the committee, because there's so much coming at us. And I want to thank Mrs. Karan after always organizing the information for us. It's a very intense scrutiny, and, uh, everybody on the committee is really so helpful, so thank you. Any questions or concerns?
I'd like to make, if you're, if it's, if it's, if there's no other questions, I have a comment that I would like to make. It's about the interaction of the Policy Committee and the Audit and Finance Committee. Uh, and I, I'm doing this because I know we have a big public audience viewing right now. Uh, Kingston City School District is one of the pioneers in the state of using its Audit and Finance Committee to, uh, review policies that don't have anything to do with, uh, finance necessarily, but it's an opportunity, we use it as an opportunity occasionally to review policies, uh, that, that impact other aspects of, of student and, and, uh, and school district, uh, operation. And this, this district-wide safety plan, reviewing that with an internal audit, is one of the examples of that. And, uh, I think we've done it on at least three occasions.
Yeah, yes, we've, we did a, uh, audit of our Title IX for our athletics, to ensure equity, uh, in our, in our athletics. And we've also done in our concussion protocols, to ensure that we are properly and, and effectively using the concussion protocols for our student athletes as well. And now this is the third time we're using it for our building safety procedures. So yes, this is the third time we're doing that.
Okay, thank you. The Teaching and Learning Committee, Dr. Jakobowitz?
Okay, thank you. Well, Dr. Padalino pretty much gave the Teaching and Learning Committee a report. Because we pretty much just focused a lot on the reopening plan and what that might look like. So, thank you, Dr. Padalino. There were really just two other points that I want to communicate to the rest of the board. First was that we, we reviewed the teen Al Charter, which happens every year. We made a-
which happens every year. We made a few changes to the Composition Section, so who's on the committee. I, there were a few comments on that. I need to make, do a final revision, and then I'll get that to Mr. Perna for approval to the Board for, at our next meeting. Then the other thing that we talked about at our meeting, we touched on the issue of state testing. Even though that's completely out of our purview, we have no control over state testing, and we were talking really about the testing that happens at the end of the year, the grades three through eight tests in math and ELA, also science, and then also the regions. So the New York State Department of Ed controls, has control over the regions essentially. But the grades three through eight testing is a mandate through the federal government, and we were pretty unanimous, I think, in our, in our thoughts about how we would like to see those requirements for testing waived this year, so as they were last year. So we had a conversation about that. It's really not in our control, but we thought it was important to make a public statement about our opposition to those standardized tests in this year of such laws.
If the Teaching and Learning Committee would like to propose a memorializing resolution for the school board to consider to send to the State Education Department, please feel free to do so at a future meeting.
Okay, if the, if the Board would support something like that, then I would be happy to put something like that together.
Okay. Is there any objection to Dr. Jakovowitz drafting a letter, and we will consider it at our next meeting? Okay. Thank you for volunteering, Dr. Jakovowitz. Any other questions for Dr. Jakovowitz? Okay. Next item on the agenda is Consent Agenda. Are there any resolutions that a board member would like to have pulled from the Consent Agenda? Any resolutions to pull? May I have a motion to adopt the Consent Agenda?
Uh-oh.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have several seconds. And are there any questions about any item on the Consent Agenda? Okay, hearing none. I'll ask, I'll call the question, all in favor of adopting the Consent Agenda, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, nay, abstentions. So unanimously adopted. I believe we have at least one donation somewhere?
We do. I've been looking forward to this one, because the Kingston City School District PK is the recipient of two child wheelbarrows, four peeler and knives for woodworking, two hammocks, two tree swings, and a canopy from the Acorn Waldorf School in Accor, so we thank you very much, because this will assist the PK Forest Education Program.
Thank you. Okay. That takes us to old business. Is there any old business to discuss? Mr. Spicer, you're muted. Mr. Spicer is muted?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, I think I have one piece of old business to let the community know about. A strategic plan was written to systematically review the district's SRO program as part of our largest safety program. There was a meeting this past Monday for board members to discuss the plan and how to move forward. At that meeting, it was decided that an SRO Advisory Committee would be formed with four board members, community members who are now being contacted, and school administrators who are also being invited at this time. The first meeting of this advisory committee is set for November seventeenth. The time is not set, but should be shortly and will be set out.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Spicer. Mrs. Shear, you had your hand up?
I did. I was going to ask where we were with the annotated calendar, because now all the committees are in and noted on it.
And I know you've done work on that, and I guess, did I fail to pass it along to?
It was in the last board packet, don't you?
Wasn't there another, was there another version?
The fifth version. That was the final one, was it? Wasn't it, Nora, the fifth one?
Version five?
I'm sorry, can't hear you.
Version five, was that the last?
Version five, I guess, I hope the final one.
Okay.
I hope.
I think it was in the last board packet.
I don't remember if it was in the last board packet or not, but we will get it published on the, I don't think, we don't have to, the Board doesn't approve the annotated calendar, does it?
No.
No, but it will be on the website.
It's posted, yeah.
It'll be on the website.
Yeah.
And any other old business? Mrs. Shear?
Probably should have been asked during the superintendent's report, but I had text messages coming in. And my daughter brought me my phone from the other room, because she said, "Your phone is blowing up." Questions about, on the plan, will there be definitions of terms like synchronous, asynchronous, hybrid, remote, there were a few others, and acronyms that we, we know what they mean, but not everybody does. So will there be a glossary?
We can clarify those for people, yes. Our current plan does have those definitions, but we can, we can clarify, yes, we can clarify those for people.
Thank you. And you'll probably get more questions during Town Hall, too.
That's the appropriate place to ask the questions, for sure.
Yeah.
And it's always good to have a list of acronyms, because that can be confusing to people who aren't daily familiar with the subjects that we are talking about. Any, no, that was new business. Any other new business? Board member announcements? The Board is having a book, a book review training session next Wednesday, October fourteenth. It will be a Teams meeting, and that's the date. Time will be announced. The top, the book topic for anyone who is interested in what we are reading, it's for white people who want to teach in the hood and other, extends on. It's an interesting book. And there's, there's no, there's no need, and we have facilitators for that book reading, or book study session. There's no, there's no need for a second executive session, and so I will call for adjournment. A resolution to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved.
Okay, moved and seconded. Did you, did you second, Mr. Spicer?
No, Mr. Um, Mr. Michael did.
Oh, okay. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed. Thank you all for attending. I hope you, most of you are home. You can watch the debate or the end of the, what is it, baseball game that's on tonight? If you have, and if you have power at your house, I guess. So thank you all. We'll see the board members next Wednesday for the book study.
On Teams.
On Teams, it'll be on Teams. And I just, has extended the suspension of open meeting law for in-person or public meetings until November third. We will continue that. I believe that's a safer way to go. If you have comments that you would like to send to the Board, please do so by noon of August twenty-first. That is the day of our first meeting.
October.
October, I'm sorry. October twenty-second. October twenty-first is our next meeting. Thank you.